So I'll call the June 14, 2018 Town of Northwood Planning Board Meeting to order at 6:35 present. Selectmen's, select persons are up. Beth Boudreau, Hal Kreider, Betty Smith, Vice Chair, or yeah, Vice Chair Lee Baldwin, Chair Bob Strobel, all Land use staff. You have a copy of the minutes on May 24. Because of a misprint, we're going to delay accepting those. They do not affect tonight's meetings. And I guess we'll get a copy of...
I've emailed them already, but I can make a copy of page six.
Do we need page six to take home, or anybody care for next time? I guess we'll get it for next time.
Thank you.
Good excuse to finish up, to do the pages that we have, and we'll do the last page before the meeting next week, or two weeks.
We just mentioned.
Yeah, yeah. So we have three new cases tonight. And we'll start off with 18-05 Camp Yavna. There should be, handed out earlier, a stapled two pager in capital letters on the top, potential Linda Smith and Northwood Planning Board, dated June 5.
Do you have that?
No.
Might be in the file here.
Yeah, it's probably sitting right there.
Looks like, is that right there?
This one?
Oh, this is different than what's in here.
Yes, it's got another page.
So it's lost this one that only has one page.
Yeah.
Looks like these are a list of changes.
Yeah, that might be useful. So at this point, I do not have a completed staff report on this one, my apologies. There are the two pager that you all received tonight, I also received tonight, and it has some very handy stuff like the number of people that are going to be in each of these buildings. So I was sort of struggling to wrap my head around what exactly we needed from the applicant to be able to gauge changes and impacts without that information. My understanding is that the total site occupancy that you have in that new packet, I think it's 420 people for the entire site, is less than the individual buildings could technically hold based on their space, but that the applicant is agreeing to that adjusted occupancy and capacity essentially so that there's not an increase in the overall site occupancy that would result in an increased load on the septic system. So in that regard, it's sort of similar to what the Boy Scouts were doing, that they were putting cabins on that could have had more people in them than the individual tent platforms they were replacing, but they were acting within an overarching cap on the number of people that could be on the entire site. So I will be going back through this plan over the next few days and hopefully coming up with some of those more specific details of things that we might want to see on the site plan, or things that we might want them to confirm as far as additional information. As I said, that is my understanding, but I would want the applicant to confirm that on the record, that that is the plan to cap that overall occupancy. You'll note on building B6 and B7, which is in the shoreline buffer, there is a note that a shoreline permit is required. We have received a copy of that, and town staff has that on file. So if you'd like to take a look at that, let us know, but that will not be something we're waiting for in the catch-all state and local permits. We have already received a copy of that. I think my understanding as far as driveway access is similar to the septic. I think the, if they're keeping the proposed capacity the same, I don't think they would be changing the use in a way that would require an update of that from DOT. I think that would more be a case of showing that adequate provisions have been made. The applicant indicated in their checklist that there were one or two waivers that they were requesting, but they didn't submit a written request for those waivers. So I think we'll need to follow up, or I will go back through as I take a deeper look at this and see whether that's even something they need a waiver for. I think one of them was showing where all of the utilities are onsite. Linda, do you know if we have in our extensive plan set for this site, a plan someplace that shows where the utilities were installed?
I think there probably is in the property file, not in the land use file.
Okay.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just procedural, just so that there's no issues that come up. We have in a butter that's on our planning board that should be addressed.
Oh.
Remember?
Sorry, I thought it was the next two cases.
No.
No, she needs to recuse herself from...
Lee, recuse yourself on the record.
I am accusing myself from this.
If you actually have to...
It's in a butter.
It's in a butter, you need to leave the table.
Fine.
Come around this side. Or go up and put all your thumbs.
You can still be in charge of vice.
I can be in charge of what?
Vice.
Okay. So I can still be in charge of vice on that.
For these forms. For these forms. And note that...
No, that's a good point.
You can still be in charge of vice. Who's having the voice choice?
So nobody...
Right.
Has any concerns.
True, no. Just note for the record that Ms. Baldwin has left the table and she is removed from the voting designation in this case.
Sorry, Gary.
So yes, if we do have some other plan on file that shows that information, I think we could probably get around a waiver request by saying we have it on file, it is part of the site plan, and therefore we don't need them to show it again.
Sure.
But if we don't have that...
I'll check with Linda on that.
Then I can just send an email, and that's our written request.
Okay. Anything else on...
Those are things that came to mind right now. If something is immediately jumping out at anybody as a red flag that needs to be changed, I'm happy to hear about it. Otherwise, I'll spend more time with it. And in this case, then I will email that out to the board so you get an electronic copy, and Susan and Linda can make it available in the office if you need a hard copy.
The applicant is anxious to get your review comments. Will you send them directly? If I send you their email, or...
Yeah, and their email... Is it this one?
Hmm.
Do they want a maintenance at Camp Yavna?
I have another one, I think, but I'll check.
If they wanted a different one, if you could just forward that email to me, I'll be happy to send it to them directly.
So the idea of this is that the major site plan doesn't, is this to be viewed as a master plan of Camp Yavna, or just what they're looking to do in the future?
Previously...
Catch-up.
Catch-up, okay.
It's sort of all of the above. Previously, they would have had a master, and then a lot of the other things that we have in the file, they'd have a close, close-up inset of the individual building. In this case, anything that's marked "proposed" is either completed, ongoing, or proposed, but they are all changes from the last master that we had on file. So some of these things are in the ground, some of them might be something they hope to put in the ground in the near future.
Just curious. It looked, that was my recollection, is that it looks like some of these have been done.
I think there's one that's proposed. I think the rest, one might be getting completed, and all the rest are built.
Okay.
Okay. Can we move on? Okay, let's do 18-6.
Which is Geary? Yes. So that one is the problem for Hal.
That's not a problem, I'm just going to recuse myself.
Okay. So Ms. Baldwin, you're walking back at the table.
I can still take the paperwork with me and look at this.
Okay, and for the record, Ms. Baldwin is back on the, at the table, and for this case, 18-06, and is added to the voting designation. Mr. Kreider has left the table, recused himself, and is not included in the voting designation. Okay. Let me take a couple minutes to go over, to read over the application.
This is one of the more complicated meetings.
Yes. Mr. James's comment about circus music is appropriate for people coming in, leaving, and...
It's just going to be one of those nights.
It's fine. It's the last week of school, so it's about that way. It's my job too, so.
The private road access?
Yeah.
You mean in terms of them getting...
The last time we had...
Yeah.
And they're just going to go in there and go to the...
All right. Yes. And we should pull them to the same standard, the same board as...
Yes, exactly right. That's what I was thinking, more than being, it wouldn't go to the...
Right.
But if the planning board allowed that, and it's lesser standard, that would be problematic to the board of selection.
What exactly are the standards that the board of selection...
I can send them to you. I can send them to you.
Okay.
Standards. They require, they require that they receive an engineered stamped road plan showing that the road meets the emergency land standards. And they're to be bonded. And they're... They're... They're going to, they're going to, I care not, but they don't want to access it from...
There's frontage, but they don't want to access from there, I assume because they want the house to be in the back where there's more space, and it's wet in the middle. I understand why they're going with it.
No, that makes sense, I think.
Doesn't it?
No.
Yes.
Ready to start, or some more minister review? Not all speak at once. Okay, go ahead. Somebody wants to give us an overview?
All right. So this is just a two-lot minor subdivision. You're taking a lot of approximately seven and a third acres and dividing it into two, one of two acres and one of five point three eight acres. The, this does have frontage on Catamount Road. Both parcels would have compliant frontage on Catamount Road, but the applicant would like their driveway access to be towards the rear of the larger parcel from Preve Drive, which is a private road. Staff agrees that because Preve Drive is on the plan for this subdivision that you would be approving, it would appear on a plat approved by the planning board and therefore would not require 67441 approval. So the Board of Selectmen won't see this, the planning board will be approving this. That said, and Linda and I were just talking about the Board of Selectmen's standards for 67441 now, where they are increasingly requiring any of those approvals to improve the class six or private road to meet emergency land standards. They typically require stamped engineered plans showing that the road meets or will meet those standards, and they require bonding for that road improvement. I would say that in this case, the planning board should be requiring the same standards as that 67441 review for consistency's sake. Additionally, I would like to see additional information from the applicant clarifying the ownership of Preve Drive. Is it Prevee? You could have told me before I had it on the record.
Okay.
Please don't put in the minutes that I mispronounced it over time.
No.
The...
Why?
So if they're going off of a private road, my understanding is that they technically wouldn't need a Town of Northwood driveway permit, but they would need permission from the people that own the road to be able to access the road. So I'd like to see some sort of ownership clarification. In this part, Prevee Drive appears to be an easement over the lot, so I'm not sure if there's something standing about access, but I would want that clarified. I think technically this could be approved, showing the driveway where it is and leaving access to a civil matter between two landowners, but that would come back to, if they weren't able to work something out where they could have access from Prevee Drive, they would have to come back to the planning board to redo the plat to show the driveway with access from the town road.
The thing I find interesting is a 20-foot setback is to the side of Prevee Drive, indicating that that in fact is not part of the lot.
My statement to that effect was based on Matt Geo, so we can clarify if, I guess if Bill Warmel as a surveyor is saying it's not part of the lot, I'd be more inclined to believe him than the GIS.
I, I'm trying to remember details of another case that was off of this.
Right, and I just mentioned that. There was a zoning board case, and there was a person that owned property further in on the road who said that she owned the road and she was not going to allow any improvements, she didn't want any changes made to the road. So I think we need to clarify if in fact they owned it, or who owns it.
She stopped in.
Oh, did she?
Her statement was that this is my road.
This week?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
After she got her notice.
Oh, okay.
She wanted to see the plans, and so I think we might be hearing from them.
Okay.
That is probably a good thing to tell the applicant about if they're going to need to negotiate this. We should probably just give them time to do it upfront, and that might, depending on what kind of timeframe they need, that might be something where we just don't accept this as complete until we have that, so we don't start the clock and then find out that that stall line, and this is just going to go on forever.
Right. If we don't accept it as complete, though, does that mean re-noticing?
Mm-hmm. It would, unless it was, unless it was continued, waiting for something very specific to come in for the next meeting.
If we fail to accept as complete, we would have to tell them exactly what they're missing.
Exactly.
So we could continue to adate certain, at which point we would reconsider completeness.
That's how we've done it.
Yeah, I know, that's how we've done it, I'm just...
But you have to identify that this, what it is.
Right.
Right.
I didn't realize it was...
Or if the applicant requests, requested a continuance before the meeting, we wouldn't even have to find it incomplete.
Right. I'm just thinking of the options.
I think there are a few ways we could do it, and we can reach out to the applicant and suggest that they get in touch with the owner of the road, and they can decide what course of action they'd like to pursue.
Okay, that would...
But if the board generally seems to agree that we probably would not want to accept this as complete without that ownership question answered, I can pass that along.
What's opinion that the board, as far as, the question really comes down as to whether the owner of the road will allow the subdivision, actually in this case it would be lot 206-20-1, the bigger the lot, access through Prevee Drive. And if that information is not received by the time we get this in two weeks, if we get this in two weeks, I think it would be sort of foolish to accept it.
Well, this indicates that it does have a right-of-way at some point. I think the question is not only does it have a right-of-way, but can the right-of-way be improved? If the planning board is going to be consistent with the Board of Selectmen's guidelines...
Or is the right-of-way currently improved to emergency land standards?
No, I don't think so.
I wouldn't believe it is a possibility.
I'd be surprised if it was, because I think the last time we heard an application of this, the recommendation, because it was a 67441, the recommendation was that the landowners there form a road maintenance agreement, and I believe that was granted without, or the Board of Selectmen granted the improvement without that condition, but I couldn't swear to that.
I am not sure whether requiring a road maintenance agreement as a condition of approval would be defensible on this, or not.
No, I'm not suggesting it was.
Would be a little squeamish.
That wasn't the intent. The intent of, was for that prior decision that the planning board recommended the force, or the, that based on what the selectmen were doing at the time, and it was not, there was no road maintenance agreement for that case, not this case. So that's why I use that information to judge whether the road has been approved or not.
Sure, I just wanted to mention that because a 67441, you're not in a, this board isn't in a position to impose conditions. In this case, you are.
Yes.
I can, if you would be interested in imposing that condition, I can try doing a little bit more research, or we can ask for a legal opinion about whether that would be an option for the board, but without further research, I would not feel comfortable suggesting it.
Yeah.
I would feel a lot more comfortable if that was left to a strongly worded suggestion.
I can't think of a legal mechanism that you could pull in other property owners for a condition for this case to begin with, so.
Hmm.
Without something town-wide or zoning-based, but anyway, that's, that's something we can, the board can mull over in the next two weeks. Anybody see anything information-wide that is missing, or that they'd want to see on this, so that we can get in, the request into the applicant for the, within the next two weeks? The only thing I've, and this is extremely minor and not applicable, is that the wetland icon is not in the legend, but that's extremely, like I said, extremely minor.
I can...if you would be interested in imposing that condition, I can try doing a little bit more research, or we can ask for a legal opinion about whether that would be an option for the board. But without further research, I would not feel comfortable suggesting it. I would feel a lot more comfortable if that was left to a strongly worded suggestion.
I can't think of a legal mechanism that you could pull in other property owners for a condition for this case to begin with, so. Without something townwide or zoning-based. But anyway, that's...that's something you can- we can board it all over in the next two weeks. Anybody see anything information-wide that is missing or that they'd wanna see on this? So that we can get in the request into the applicant for the- within the next two weeks. The only thing I've, and this is extremely minor and not applicable, is that the wetland icon is not in the legend. But that's extremely, like I said, extremely minor. And not worth redoing unless we have other changes to the plan.
I identified that there is not a proposed sewage disposal location for lot twenty dash one identified. So that would be something that I would ask to see. So I'll add that there should be some sort of labeling of the wetland, or the symbology should be added to the key.
I'll be curious to see where they fit it.
I would imagine they're planning to put it in the vicinity of those two test pits.
Oh, yeah.
But they didn't box off an area and say that's what they were planning to do.
Yeah. It doesn't quite look large enough, but that's not for me to decide at this point.
So in this case, I think the only state permit we would be waiting on prior to signing plans would be the subdivision from N H D E S. Septic, I think, makes more sense to tie to the building permit if they're not planning to build right away.
Okay. And they have two contiguous upland areas, from the looks of it? One point six and one point seven?
There's actually four, but...
Okay.
There's two that meet the acre.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for. That's what I...
I don't know if they're gonna figure this out, but I delineated the wetlands and the buffers.
Okay. Thank you. You wanna hold that up again?
Pass it around if you want.
I saw it was wide. Hold on. So the...go ahead. I can hold it up.
The blue was buffers and the green is wetlands. Or setbacks, I should say.
Thank you. So out of curiosity, there's...they have two test pits, one on the two acre and one on the five point three eight acre. Did they retake the test pit for test pit one for the existing house?
I'm also wondering...
Because there's only a one-bedroom system there.
Yeah, they did. They did. They did both, which is... I guess one, making sure that all the...their ducks are in a row. Okay. Anything else from the board? Mr. Kreider, you're welcome back. If you would like. Okay, and Mr. Kreider has joined his back of the table and has added to the voting designation. So eighteen dash seven. I'm trying to think, when was the last time we've had three applications? Been a while. Um, two fifty-eight is...I guess we'll find it in a second. I'm not that good with remembering where my house number is.
This is the Northwood Garage building.
Okay.
There are two buildings on site. It is actually the Northwood Garage building in the space to the east side of the building.
Okay.
So the same place, the coffee that Aroma Joe was talking about.
Yeah, and the same one as the dance studio.
Used to be a video shop a good while ago.
That was a long time ago. Small engine repair.
Been here a long time.
Yeah.
Nail waxing, lac- lashes and salon. Here it's just getting to be the hotbed of...
We're very fancy.
Body services between two shave shops, barber shops, and...
We're gonna be well groomed.
We will be well groomed.
Yes, so.
Well, no coffee there. That was a bad place for coffee.
Best groomed town in the state.
We clean up good.
So I did note that on the site plan, it shows a space labeled retail floor space. That that's my understanding, that that's where they're going in. I'd like them to label that as the proposed nail salon. So that we can identify in the site plan where they're going in.
Yeah, because I was thinking they were going in...
I was assuming when I first looked at it that they were going into the other building that isn't even on the site plan, and was wondering who did the photocopying.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that would be helpful.
Sorry about that.
I also made a note that the information that they gave us didn't really seem to be enough to figure out that the...whether the septic system could handle the load or not. We've since received a letter from a septic designer. So you can even skip over those comments if you would like. And that will no longer be a condition of approval.
Why is that no longer a condition of approval? You have...
Because we've received the letter.
Saying they can cover it, okay.
Right.
And out of curiosity, on the parking spaces labeled N G?
I assumed that that was N G for Northwood Garage.
Well, I don't know. It says natural glow, isn't it? See, which is confusing because these were assigned to Northwood Garage before, and this is for parking spaces.
Right. Are those things that...are those N Gs things that she has added? Or were those on...okay. Then we should definitely ask her to clarify that.
They're listing twelve parking spaces, so.
Oh, yeah, there's more on the...
Pretty significant for a two-chair salon.
Right.
Yeah, I would think so.
I might have people sitting there waiting for the nails to dry, Bob.
I wouldn't know.
You know, after they're buffed, you know.
Yeah, you know.
I wouldn't know.
It's called me time.
Yeah. Maybe you get a foot massage.
So that, I guess that would be my clarification would be just to figure out if...I would guess that N G is for the nail salon, but... Unless they're doing like some of the families I know where all the kids are named the same. And they only allow businesses that have the letters N G in them.
Does it say the name of the business someplace?
Yeah, Natural Glow.
Glow.
It's on the site.
It is. Yeah, it is on the site plan, and the hour's on the west. Seeing as it's the same handwriting, I would assume that N G is for...
I saw it says Natural Glow ten in the email. I was wondering if they're gonna do ten.
Hmm, okay.
Because they list nails, bar lashes and waxing.
So I guess the question becomes our natural glow nails and beauty. Be eliminating parking spaces that are needed for...
I think if the entire site is parking compliant.
But that's what I'm saying. I don't know if that's...I would think. It's gotta be figured somewhere.
I'll check the code compliant parking for whatever our closest use is to a nail salon.
Definitely. That's one of the top ones.
Okay. Anything else anybody wants to see? A request of the applicant for clarification or...so we'll just get those two items? The location on the map of...for this actual site, and then the verification of the N G parking for is for Natural Glow.
There are a few other changes that I want them to make as well. They don't have addresses or the map number of a butter's lots.
True.
Where for each of those, we want them to have name, address, map and lot. So I would like that to be updated. There's not a north arrow on the plan. So I'd like that drawn in.
What might be really helpful, I don't know where he's allowed this to be used, would be if she could photocopy the bigger space and then just add white out and correct those, because all that's...
You mean if she could get a full-size twenty-four by thirty-six photocopy?
Huge help.
Well, at least some of those may be a little darker. Some of those...
Yeah, it's so hard to see this. It's just...
Right.
Maybe it was...I see Linda has an actual blueprint. I'm wondering if that's why, what it was copied from.
Yes.
Because that doesn't copy as good as black.
That's what I'm saying. If she was able to get a copy of this, then it'd be dark enough.
Who's the...who did that?
She's already got permission to overwrite on the site plan.
So who's...who's...who did the work?
Bill Warmel.
She could call Bill and...
She's already done that. He's already given her approval.
Well, that's what I mean, and just print off a copy to... He could do that pretty easily.
Good point.
I just think that would be something a little darker, a little better.
Just go right to the source, yeah.
And then, you know, when you put it in the file, five years later, you can still read it.
Right. Guess was two thousand and five, and you can still read it just fine.
I'm sure he still has them.
And then the item that honestly I have no idea how it's going to come out would be driveway access, where if we're being consistent, we should have them confirm with N H D O T District Six that the driveway design is consistent and can handle the proposed change in use. But they are already thinking about this area because of the Cooper Hill driveway permit. So I don't know if those permits coinciding is going to complicate things.
Question. Is this space...was this space already approved for something else, and now it's just a change of use? Or is this a new use on the site?
It's a change of use for that space. But for changes of use, we typically require written confirmation from District Six saying the driveway is going to be able to handle it. If they were going from a thousand square foot retail or a thousand square foot nail salon to a thousand square foot fast food establishment, you would imagine that there might be a considerably larger number of cars trying to come in and out.
Well, we...I think we do wanna be consistent. Does it cost anything for them to ask for that review?
Sure.
If they have to get a brand-new driveway permit, yeah, that could cost them.
Yeah, but if it's just to confirm that the existing driveway is sufficient?
That we would accept an email from D O T saying, "We're fine with this." It's just a matter of whether D O T would be willing to send an email saying, "We're fine with this," considering the attention that they're already putting on this area.
My understanding in talking to D O T...
And that's on D O T's end. That's not anything that we have control over.
Right. So that latter thing that you talked about, does that cost them anything to do?
The email?
Yeah.
Shouldn't.
Yeah.
Do they don't charge them for that?
It's just a review of the existing.
My understanding, though, from talking to the engineer there is they are now looking at every change of use as a new...new permit.
Really? Well...
And they wanna see all of them.
I mean, like one of you said, you know, there's consideration for Cooper Hill. We wanna play it safe in terms of them knowing, then not have a backlash later or a whoops, or something like that.
Yeah, because they're working right on, considering that access is part of the one across the street.
Especially if they end up tying improvements to one application but not the other, and there's some sort of exaction involved. Yeah, I think we would definitely wanna be clear with D O T about what's going on here.
Yeah, we don't wanna...
And we should probably encourage the applicant to do that outreach sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I suggested that early on, before she even filed this.
Okay, so she knows and she should theoretically...okay.
I suggest that she get...do that right off in the very early beginning.
What was the other use? What's it changing from?
It was a video store. It was the last approved use.
And that included approval by the state on the driveway?
No, that was probably...we're talking...
That was a long time ago.
We're talking V H S tapes. Does that tell you?
Yeah, that would be about two thousand... Early two thousands.
So you don't think they were as diligent at that point? I'm just wondering if...
There was much less traffic on the...
No, because they looked at that as part of the whole thing where they built the hair salon and Northwood House of Pizza and Anytime Fitness.
When they put the side, the side building in.
So there should be something on record about what volumes they were happy with at that point in time and stuff.
Well, we did that with...
Oh, yeah, two thousand one. This was approved. That was a driveway permit was required then, sure.
The traffic analysis we have with the Aroma Joe's application.
True.
What was there after the video place? Wasn't there like a...
There was a dance studio proposed.
But wasn't like the small engine repair place there?
Yeah, Jim's was there for a very short period of time.
Were they in that, or were they actually in part of...
No, they were in the small...he was in the small end unit. But he was only there for a couple of months, and then he went and moved down to Dennis Pond.
Well, the only... The thing I noticed on the photocopy blueprint is that the, you know, retail floor space is... The thing I noticed on the photocopy blueprint is that the, you know, retail floor space is a thousand square feet with four parking spaces. But they have labeled twelve, so just maybe get some clarification on...
One NG or the other NG?
That might be the original application, Bob.
Could be.
'Cause that's not handwritten, I mean, that's printed as opposed to handwritten. But yeah, we shouldn't have it inconsistent.
Right. I mean, it can be, one of them could be blanked out, it doesn't matter, just...
Right.
If, I would make the assumption that they're claiming the twelve makes more sense, but...
Yeah, never know.
Okay, anything else on this one? And you're gonna contact the owner for, or the applicant for the changes you want, your information you want?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
Uh, six seventy-four forty-one. Oh, this one? Okay. Is this just the only, only one we have?
What one is that? Yeah, that, those now are supposed to be copied just like the application.
Twenty-five Claubert, where's Claubert?
Claubert is, uh, off of Genus Pond, Genus Pond. Old Barnstead Road goes off to the right and it, this is to the left, just beyond it.
Okay, I can read the...
Drive eyes if you want, or...
Yeah, I can read the description. Seasonal cottage, proposed use is seasonal. Single-story, description of work, jack-up building, move the building fifteen feet from the water, put the building on a full foundation, the building will meet all setbacks, making a non-conforming a lot more conforming. No expansion of living space, we are working with the state to move away from the water.
Oh, I actually know that I'm remembering this one. If the board would like to review this tonight, this is going to the building inspector only because there is, it's gonna be exact, exactly the same camp, seasonal camp, and they're moving it back because there's an erosion issue near the water. And they wanna prevent a problem from occurring, either structurally or to the property near the water before it happens. So that isn't of the level that would go to the board of selectmen. So if you wanna make comments to the building inspector based on what it is, but there's no change in dimensions of the structure, the only thing is it would have some, a foundation underneath it to make it, because they have to move it back away from the water. So it would actually be to benefit the, both the structure and the lake itself so that there, there wasn't issues in the future with eroding away in front of the king.
Does it, it doesn't show where they're, it's just fifteen feet back?
Mm-hmm.
Can you pan back just so we can see overall? The other way, zoom out, sorry. Yeah, I just wanna... Oops, you lost it.
Hit the, hit the left arrow beside five, so, yeah.
Let me go after it.
Just one more, please.
Okay, could you zoom in now?
It's seasonal to seasonal, there's no change in use or structure.
Yeah, they are right on the water.
Yeah.
You can just hit the left arrow by the twenty-five, by the address, and that will shrink that. So it looks...
Blessings in this.
If I looked at this, I looked at the scale of that, it looks like the house would be, the back corner of the house would be moved... So that, that is the back corner of the house, it would go about, back about there.
Yeah, the neighbors had...
Input on a full foundation.
The neighbors had some, one of the neighbors further up or further down had some troubles too, and they, I think they raised theirs, but there, there's definitely some erosion and problems like that. And that house, yeah, Travis is right on the water practically.
Look on the hamburger.
Does that make sense? Because the wind is gonna blow from the west, which is to the left, and this is on the east end of the lake, so it catches all the waves. So that's partly, that's why they're having some erosion.
Well, and, and the ice.
True, same, same thing. When the ice breaks up, it's gonna go to the south.
It all goes against something.
Thoughts on this?
Well, it's, it's a, it's a, I mean, it's not really a change per se other than making it less intrusive on the shoreline.
Well, they're putting on a full foundation, I'll take that.
But we, we could at least encourage them to consider a road maintenance agreement if there isn't one. And that's our standard.
That is our standard.
I think they have one.
They might, if they don't...
I don't know if it says that in there, but I, I think I did mention that and you did say they had one.
Any idea what it would be? Oh, wait, maybe, maybe...
I know they have the neighborhood watch.
Actually, I believe there is because, um, one time we were visiting there and they were actually having an association meeting, a neighborhood meeting.
I think they have a...
They have a neighborhood watch, so they might do that kind of stuff.
Can you have this back around, please? Thank you.
I mean, I'm, I'm struggling to see anything that's that tremendous here. I guess I'm missing something.
Yeah, same.
I would say it's the exact opposite, they're trying to avoid...
Something, yeah.
Do we actually have a six seventy?
Do you wanna hand it to Matt and go through what?
Okay, that'd be lovely. I'm just thinking...
Did we get everything back? Oh, okay.
I think so.
Yeah, we passed back the one we had.
I think the blueprint came back, I was trying to make, keep track of it myself. The...
Yep, here we go. The Claubert Drive Improvement Association of Genus Pond Constitution and Bylaws, they have a road association.
Okay, even better.
Oh, and that's from the president of the road association.
Okay.
Snow flowing, sandy, or whatever is needed for total access. Hold this letter and the enclosed bylaws, clear up any issues that link them up in the future.
Okay. That's the one place I didn't look, was the, that's the one place I didn't look, was the envelope.
Is that with this application or, oh, okay.
Yes.
I wonder if there's some way to reference it so that if other lots come up, we'd know to look for that.
Yes, as a matter of fact, there is.
I just found out today.
We just learned today, uh, a new, part of the assessing program that we can add information into such as this, so I could potentially... Yeah, we, we have to wait for an upgrade, but we're gonna, we can scan and attach the... I mean, that's coming within the next day or two, they just gotta come around and do that, but, um...
Yeah, I'd encourage that.
Because we were, yeah, we were saying things like that, whether it's a road association or a private, private drive.
Well, really, anything where we get more information that's applicable to adjacent...
That we can just look up.
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, it's just really handy to know later on when your memory isn't...
We're trying to get more digital and where we can have it all in one program, we can pull things up and locate it so much easier than hunting for files and...
Right, right, yeah, not remembering exactly which ones it's with.
Do we have any action on this then, tonight?
Well, can we, is it a request or is it...
Say no comment if you want, I mean, you don't have to.
Just, I'm asking the board.
But you should say something so that it goes back.
Looks good, I think.
Fine, sounds good.
Looks good.
Yeah.
It's fine with me, sounds good.
Thank you for letting us know, sounds good.
Right, we like it.
No com, no comment?
Must be formal, yeah.
No, no comment?
No comment.
Maybe, how about reviewed, no comment? That way they, we know.
There you go.
They know.
I mean, I could have just done a thumbs up emoji.
There you go, that's what we should do.
An emoji on that.
Sure.
It sounds more friendly.
I can do that.
With a smiley face.
I'll give that to him when he signs.
Matt's signed. Any updates or signatures on, that we need, since it's on the agenda? To aware of, okay.
Master plan?
Yep, you ready?
Do we wanna do this on this agenda, or would we rather finish this meeting and adjourn and do it as a subcommittee?
How does the board wanna handle that?
I think it's a separate meeting, I think.
Doesn't matter to me.
Otherwise it gets tangled up with the...
That's how we had talked about doing it previously.
Was having, was adjourning this meeting and have a subcommittee. That way if there are people who do not wanna spend the time into discussing the minutia of the master plan vision statement and word choice and those kind of other things, they do not need to stick around.
Well, plus we don't need a quorum then, or at least...
We don't need a quorum of the planning board.
Yeah.
And the staff may...
Staff may also adjourn if they would like.
Yeah, I think...
I would say before we act on a motion to adjourn, what we may want to put a couple of minutes into talking about is the process for CIP.
Okay.
Staff has sent out a request to all departments for updates on CIP projects for this year. I think, Linda, you set the deadline next week?
Am I remembering that correctly to get information?
Oh, July?
I thought it was July.
Yeah, it was, it's the Monday before the July workshop meeting.
Okay.
I got an email from town administrator, LaFond, was it Karen?
Kate.
Kate, not too far off. Asking for a copy, she had a copy of what Joe Gunter had put together based on numbers that was out of date. I did send her, and I think I gave you a copy as well, of the overall spreadsheet, they showed us the entire plan, just not the detailed projects. And I also volunteered that if, in, as part of town staff's request to the departments, if there are any questions about the role of the CIP or what information we're looking for, stuff of that effect, I'd be happy to make a brief appearance at whenever, to whatever department needs it or requests it, just to explain the CIP process.
One thing, maybe you could clarify for me based on what you just said was, what I sent out was a file. Did you happen to open that up, the one from two thousand and seventeen? And I found it, uh, that came from Joe Gunter and it did say that that was what was provided to the planning board, but I don't recall ever getting that.
That was not...
Final edition.
It looked like it was essentially a collection of all of the projects.
Yes.
Right, and I don't remember getting that or seeing it.
I think this board only saw and talked about and acted on the spreadsheet.
Correct, correct.
So I think it would be good if we could...
The, yes, what?
Yeah, that's all part of everything, 'cause I don't think the spreadsheet was part of that document.
No, it wasn't.
I think it only had the profiles of the projects.
The, the intent, as I recall from talking with Joe Gunter, was that the, to quote him, "I don't wanna touch your spreadsheet." Because it was too complicated. So what he did was took a master plan, or a CIP document from another town, using that format, pulled numbers from the spreadsheet, and added text to describe the documents to make it more readable. But I don't think that ever got beyond a draft and the planning board never approved it. We just did the spreadsheet, but someone else, 'cause I'm also, since I wrote the spreadsheet, I don't wanna run the board more than I already do. So does that make me sound, is that somebody else's recollection? That when we talked about the CIP, we only talked about the spreadsheet?
That was what I recalled, but I saw that and I thought, well, it must've gone out, but I didn't recall it. Do you want me to send that spreadsheet to the department heads?
That would...
As an addendum to the first one, I think it should.
I think it should because it shows the overall plan.
Right, exactly.
Where each piece fits in and how we did it. But then again, I wrote it and I'm biased toward it. And I love working with spreadsheets, so I, having a ten thousand cell spreadsheet isn't...
Much clearer picture.
I do.
So we can send the spreadsheet around, but I think we also need to think about what, how we're going to pull this together this year. Last year, we had a CIP subcommittee that, if memory serves correctly, was...
He and Hal.
Bob, was Hal on it? I was thinking it was the two Joes.
Maybe Hal was...
But that might have been master plan times.
Hal was on the master plan, were you on the CIP?
No, I had done the CIP, I tried to do the CIP like four, five, maybe six years ago.
My, my brain thought Bob Strobel, Joe Gunter, Joe McCaffrey.
I don't even remember Bob and Joe.
I remember Joe Gunter, I don't remember Joe McCaffrey, but he might have been there for a little bit. Might have been a committee of two.
Are you talking last year?
I, I'm talking last year, but going forward this year...
I, I don't ever remember anybody besides you and Joe.
I think our options are we can either assign a subcommittee or we can assign a workshop at which the board will work on it as a committee of the whole. I talked to Kate about this and she's not interested in being involved in a subcommittee. She thinks that her role is by the time this gets to you, budget committee and the select board is when she gets involved as somebody that's interacting with those committees.
I'm, express my concern... I'm, express my concern to various people that I don't want this CIP to be a one-person show, um, so that if I ever get off the board... Yeah, uh, that, that knowledge is not lost.
I think people will still vote for you, Bob.
That means I gotta run. What if I don't wanna run?
We'll write your name down.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna get written in. Then what are you gonna do?
Now I know where I stand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There may only be two ways for you to get off of this board.
Okay.
Don't put any, don't put any pressure on you.
Well, the afterlife might not be too bad.
For me?
The afterlife might not be too bad.
I gotta do a job I start at the end of this month. Let me at least start it. I can only get one paycheck before I get...
He'd be on the planning board there, too, so...
Yeah, probably.
I guess what I would, what I would say, or what I'm thinking, is that, given, given that it is, CIP is a planning board responsibility, and we've now, we have the mechanism down for the analysis of generating, generating the CIP plan, I think we need to flesh out the process. And that might, we have, obviously, we sent out the request, um, but I think I would like more feedback from the board as a whole to say, okay, what do we need to do to record the process, make sure it's actually consistent? You know, I won't say error-free, but largely makes sense and intuitive. And that is something more than I can do, or that I'm willing to do.
So, if I remember correctly from last year, you were just talking about the process.
Mm-hmm.
You sent out the requests, then, then you recorded them?
List the criteria for what, why constitutes a capital project.
Right.
And it includes information like, you know, what is the project, what's the cost, where the funding source is gonna go, when does the project due? Why is it due at this point in time?
Okay, so then...
Or what's the priority for it?
So then...
Those kinds of things.
Yes, okay, so then, maybe one of the steps... Can we write down the steps on the screen? Can we just sort of
Sure.
work our way through?
Aside from the back?
Cause like, you just went into some detail that I think is important, and maybe should be a separate step. So, send out the requests, educate folks on what the request entails. Cause it sounds like if you don't, you won't get
Right.
what you need back.
I think it's explained on the form.
It's right on the form, I saw it from the first one.
Well, let's test that.
All those questions are right there.
Did we get back pretty good information last time?
Yes, we did.
Okay, well, then maybe it doesn't need to be an extra step, then. But once you got the information, somebody had to put it into the spreadsheet.
Put it into a spreadsheet and said, listed all the projects.
And then...
By, by when, essentially, when they were due, how long they would last, and then...
And then somebody had to iterate on that to come up with something that smoothed out the costs?
Right, exactly, and that's the whole idea of the CIP, is that if we get, if a town depart, if four town departments request $50,000 projects each in one single year, and nothing for the next three years, your job is to come up, just currently is to say, yeah, we're gonna have to raise taxes for $200,000, but then drop them next year.
Okay.
And the CIP plan is to say, okay, given the priority from, as established by the, the town department, the due date, the funding mechanism, or the recommended funding mechanisms, can we make the CIP, the planning board, adjustments in this so that we can average out the actual cost of these over time, so that we don't have a tax rate going up and down, and up and down, and up and down?
Right, so, all that work's done in the planning board side, and then you go to the selectmen, or the planning board sends that to the selectmen to say, based on the CIP, these are the, the projects that we recommend you consider for warrant articles or however, right?
Right.
So this is...
And what I, what actually ended up happening is, after the planning board accepted the spreadsheet, we had a change in administration, uh, and deadlines were due for warrant articles, so, uh, I helped draft the language of some of the warrant articles that were on the CIP.
Right.
Which is fine, and which was one of the things I would consider doing for the CIP subcommittee.
So, does, does the planning board's job end when we've passed it on to the selectmen?
Depends on how you wanna consider it, and what we, as a board, want to do. I would...
I mean, do we wanna get in the middle of it, other than to make the recommendation?
What I, what, well, it's ultimately the planning, the, the select boards, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, they do the one on...
I think the select boards, they do those warrant articles, the language of the warrant articles. What I, what I had done was proposed draft language for items that either carried a bond, or, or, um, multi-year, or needed a capital reserve fund, or something in that effect. Because of the change in staff and, uh, the time, the pressure of the, of deadlines for posting warrants. And that was fairly easy to do, cause it's, just, cause I had some experience with it. If that's something that the board wants the CIP to do, um, and I would, I would recommend it, because it makes it very clear and takes the burden off of the board of selectmen to, and probably in iteration, to say, okay, yes, we wanna do this, we need language to establish whatever. So we can present a package to say, yep, here is a warrant article that we need for this year for these art, items on the CIP, and...
I did, I have to say, I disagree with you a little bit on that one. Only because of the earlier kidding we gave you about time and stuff. I, I think it's better at some point to, to pass it off to the selectmen, and, you know, the town administrator, whoever that is, really is tasked with coming up with the right language, making sure the lawyers help us do that. And I think that's a good place to cut it off, but it's also a good place to stop having to do more work and delegate. Cause I think the town administrator should be used to doing those, and should be knowledgeable, should be the most knowledgeable. And maybe it's okay for you, but it wouldn't be okay for me or some of the other folks.
Sure.
And I think we should be playing on the expertise that we pay for.
Fine, okay. The, I think what I would want to include then, and when we hand off the CIP to, or make it public, and we're accepted, is include in there, say, a summary of how we recommend each funding.
Well, isn't that part of the spreadsheet?
It is part of the spreadsheet, but it's not always easy to pull it out.
Well, that can be just a summary. Cause I mean, you're just gonna pull out that year, cause that's all they care about.
Pull out the, the upcoming year's proposed projects, you know, make sure that the legend says, you know, capital reserve fund, warrant article, establish whatever. You know, some kind of mechanism, so that they have something a little more to go on for when you're drafting one.
But I, I think, much beyond that, I think we, we should be...
I mean, you're volunteering your time, too. It's a lot of extra time.
Yeah, we pay somebody to know that stuff, we pay somebody to know when to go to the lawyers, pay somebody...
I'm saying this with a smile, so please don't take it as, as criticism, but, um... Let's say, I was strong-armed into, can you please help me draft a warrant article? So, which is fine. I was happy to, happy to do it in that case.
Well, if I could add a comment, I was going to say something to that effect, that, uh, we, you know, we did have an interim town administrator at that point, who was also doing end of the year and everything else. And Bob did jump in and, uh, was asked by the interim town administrator to step in and do that, and he came right in and did it.
Understand the way that was...
Greatly appreciated. I, I'm not sure that that would be standard practice. I, I would agree with Hal, that it would be the town administrator that would draft that language.
But thank you for stepping up.
But they could always, yeah, it was greatly appreciated. It, we'd have been in a jam without it, but...
But what I, I know when I present spreadsheets, cause I've done that a couple of times, I see the eyes glaze over. Not, and that's not a criticism of anyone, it's, everybody has their own unique set of skills. But sometimes pulling information out of a complicated spreadsheet can be difficult.
Sometimes just a little paragraph.
Exactly, exactly.
Should be just one per project, or just a summary.
That's fine.
One page or less.
And certainly, there could be a, you know, a suggestion of if, if you want assistance or need the planning board to be involved.
Is that enough information on mechanism for CIP?
So, I have made some process and document notes, um, so...
I can't see them.
I will read them to you.
Man, we were doing so good with the math.
So, I found this lined up as a six-step process. Step one, send the request for capital projects to all departments. Step two, compile all projects received. Step three, the planning board, in some entity, reviews projects received and adjusts the spending timeline to smooth the spending levels. Step four, the planning board prepares the CIP document. Step five, the planning board adopts the CIP document.
Yeah.
Step six, the town administrator and board of selectmen prepare warrant article language for the year zero projects.
So, James, on that process, at what point does the select persons get the summary that we just discussed? Is that part of the...
After we accept it.
So, I would consider, let me then go into, the document should contain the following.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, some sort of a brief introduction explaining what the CIP is, process, et cetera. Profiles for each project that have a description, a funding amount, a funding source, uh, and a target year. Section three would be the CIP timeline, where we take all of those projects and we somehow arrange them into what's getting funded when, and then, uh, section four would be a summary explanation of the projects, um...
For that year?
We could do a, a pullout of just the year zero projects, since those would be the things that are going straight into the warrant, um, and that would be pretty easy.
Recommended to go straight into the warrants. I mean, just, just because we...
We gotta be careful with that language, because the CIP does not recommend projects. It recommends funding mechanisms for proposed projects. You don't have scrutiny over whether the project should be funded or not.
So, the project's gonna happen, we're just...
The voters, well...
Yeah.
The thought process is, we've compiled these projects from departments, we've found a way to make the timeline work, to make the funding work, to identify funding sources. Things then move forward in the CIP, where we've got our year zero projects, those go to warrant, they get voted up or down. And we've got our year one projects that become our year zero.
Correct.
Theoretically, if we've compiled all those things from all departments and they make it to year zero, those should probably be going to warrant for an up or a down vote.
Yeah, oh, no, I agree with that. I guess, when I say recommended, I guess, if, we're, I use the word recommend because we're adjusting the timeframes of them. Maybe that's the poor choice of word.
We're, we're deciding what are the year zero projects, the select board should be taking the year zero projects and preparing warrants for them.
Okay, so this is where I'm coming up with the recommendations, cause we're really saying, we think the selectmen should can, we think the selectmen should write warrants for year zero projects, but that's just our suggestion. They could choose to not write them, or they could choose to add some year one projects, or some other projects.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Correct.
And it would also be up to the board, post-election then, and the next year, that if there were year zero projects that weren't funded...
Right.
What do we do with those? Do we put them back into year zero because we need to give them another shot? Were they things that moved forward through the CIP but may not actually be a priority, so we maybe stick them
Yeah.
back in year three or four?
Yeah.
Items, items that are, I don't call them mandatory, but that the need has not gone away.
Right.
Right.
That if, they didn't get funded, but the need is still there to be met, like
Yeah, red, red list of projects.
Fire apparatus, or breathing apparatus is one thing.
Right, yeah.
There could be possibly a different funding source as well.
Exactly, yeah, different funding source, you know, reevaluations, and that's not something we've really considered for the CIP, is if things didn't get funded, but the need hasn't gone away, what do we do with them? That's why I want the whole board, or at least a significant portion of the board, involved in the process.
It's so exciting. It's so exciting. Say, yes, it is, get everyone excited about it.
It's what the planning board is designed to do, is think long-term. Cause board of selectmen, you can think long-term, and I don't say this in any way as criticism of, of any group or board, or the way state government is, or local government is set up, but your timeframe of action is one, is the current upcoming fiscal year.
Right.
Just like the budget committee. And planning board is not really looking at year zero, because in the, if, over the 10-year timeframe, or five-year, or whatever it is the CIP has adopted, you really wanna be looking at those long-term things that all of a sudden come due, such as, you know, the school roof, or the town roof, or the HVAC, or the furnace, or whatever, that have a 20-year lifetime, so all of a sudden, you're not getting
Throw in your 18.
Hit by, oh, we gotta come up with 50 grand.
Mm-hmm.
So, to bring this back around to the topic at hand, right now, I've noted for steps three, four, and five, reviewing the projects, preparing the CIP document, adopting the CIP document, that we're gonna do that with everybody.
I think so, at least for this current year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if those projects should be coming in around, or just before the July workshop, then we can, we can have an agenda item for the July workshop to begin working.
We can't, because I won't be here.
Were we pretty successful?
We pushed off for a little bit, based on that information?
We can push for a little bit, but I think we're, we're looking at coming up on, probably needing to have this done and adopted by, what, September, October?
Yes.
Oh, September.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the budget cycle starts.
Right, I mean, we have to...
Which means, if we want to adopt this in September, um, even if it was at the final meeting, and not at the workshop, that would give us September, August, August, July, July, June, six meetings between now and then, to get the entire CIP done.
If...
Five after we've received projects back.
What I, if you didn't hear me, what I, I will not be here for the July workshop, or work session. What I'm thinking is, if we get the, we get the information...
We could distribute it and get people thinking about it.
I can actually, well, you have, Linda has a copy of it, I can create, get a blank, my blank analysis worksheet available, and that could get loaded, at least with the description of the projects and all the raw data, and then all that we really need to do at the, either at the end, the July regular meeting, or in August, would be the moving around and the analysis.
Do you already have a list of projects?
No, like, we...
We requested, we requested a list of projects.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Of town departments.
And you have the list of projects from last year.
And we have a list of projects from last year, exactly.
Okay.
Um, I think what we need, maybe what we need to reiterate would be sending out the spreadsheet to the town department heads.
Saying, if there are any changes to these projects you've already submitted, please fill out the form again to identify those.
Right, and that, the, I think I put the actual year, 2018, 17, whatever, on it. If there are projects that either were not funded or not completed, or whatever, please adjust this so that we have updated information. If there are projects that are listed for... If there are projects that are listed for 18, 19, or something, or that are no longer applicable, like I know the library's gonna have a couple, because I think they did a bunch.
Right, so you're asking departments then to think like five years ahead, thinking what they're gonna need possibly?
I think it's five years, within the five-year timeframe, but it's certainly welcome to go out 10. $10,000 cost and a lifetime of at least three years for, for whatever the project is.
Right, okay.
I think those are the criteria.
The one thing I'm not sure of is who the contact person at the school would be that would get this. I know there's been some change-
Off the top of my head, I would probably give it to the principal. The principal would be able to say, to gather that. I know the information I got from the school came-
I, the government body is the school board.
The school board.
I would go to the school board.
Yeah. I would, I'd like to share.
If you, if you go around the board-
They're the ones responsible for budgeting for the school.
Correct.
Man.
The reason I say the principal is the principal will be able to bring it to the school board, or at least get it in the right hands.
I wouldn't go around the school board.
That should be their job to get that from him.
I wouldn't go around the school board.
In this case.
Okay. My, knowing how my school board works, it would not get to the right person in the time, in a timely manner.
Here's what I will do. I will send it to the chair of the school board and CC the principal.
There you go. What a diplomat.
Maybe the superintendent, too, do you think? Maybe the superintendent as well?
Yeah.
Absolutely, but it's superintendent.
Yeah.
Yes, because it's coming from town.
If you were suggesting the principal, I was just, I was wondering if you didn't have one?
What, a principal?
A superintendent.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, it's a chair.
Yeah, that's, this is their job.
Yeah, but again, I wouldn't, I'd be careful down there on the school board.
The reason I suggest going to a little bit further down the chain of command as well is that the, it will save some steps, because this will most likely fall on the principal to accomplish.
But that way all will be notified, you know?
All of them there, and instead of waiting for it,
I would have the first.
Instead of waiting it for it to trickle down to the principal, if they could start working on it immediately.
I think that's fair.
I don't mean to step on anybody's toes.
Yeah, you don't want to do that. So, CC the superintendent and the principal, right?
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Appreciate the input.
But the information I got from the school was quite good before and it came from the department heads themselves, so. Okay. Anything else?
That's it for the main agenda.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, motion and end. Second to adjourn at 8:10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, those abstaining. Okay.